Welcome to the Romalian Local Schools District Board of Education meeting, regular meeting of Mondays, September 9th, 2019.
Mr. Stark.
Here.
Ms. Ennis.
Here.
Ms. Stapp.
Here.
Ms. Russell.
Here.
Mr. Habermill.
Here.
All members present?
I will now stand for the question of the unions, followed by a moment of silence. My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Constitution of the United Nations, under God, indivisible, and every being just as a whole. First up, by the five, we have a legislative report.
Um, there's been a lot this month for some reason, I...
There's not much going on.
I was gonna say, I noticed you didn't send me email, okay, so it's not just me then. So I looked up, it looks like there was a couple of House bills that were introduced, not anything too pressing, but House Bill 321 is one of them, and I think these are more amendments to things that are already there, so again, not a huge deal, but this one's in regards to age-appropriate student instruction and child sexual abuse and sexual violence prevention, and in-service staff training and child sexual abuse prevention. It would require grades K through six to receive annual education on child sexual abuse prevention, and requires grades seven through twelve to receive dating violence prevention education and sexual violence prevention education. And then, House Bill 22, another one, I think, is more of a revision of something else that's already there, and I tried to follow this one, but the, it seems like the main, this is about what the Ohio Teacher Residency Program says, and it seemed to me like it was on the evaluation process of resident teachers, wanting to put the emphasis more on mentoring and counseling as opposed to on evaluations of those resident teachers. And then the only other thing is, I saw an article that Governor DeWine did, he did an executive order creating a specialized division of homeland security, calling it the Ohio School Safety Center, and that provides access for schools to resources, information, and training on school safety, so it's interesting that he's getting going.
Next up, public participation. Okay, moving on, superintendent's report.
All right, I'm gonna do a little shift here. We had quite a few employees that we brought in last month, and we introduced them at the August meeting. Tanya was our last hire in, and Tanya Brady is a middle school and a high school intervention specialist, and so, Tanya, if you could just tell us a little bit about yourself and your background. Sure, you can stand by the podium if you don't mind.
Hi, my name is Tanya Brady. I'm from Amherst, and like you said, I'm an intervention specialist at the middle school and the high school, and I've been teaching about three years, and I had a baby, a baby girl, June the 5th, and also, I am honored to be part of the Romalian Schools, and I'm looking forward to meeting, getting to know each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks.
Okay, I'll proceed with the recommendation of a resolution to approve Kurt Habermill for the varsity head basketball coach, level forty-three, step six for the 2019-2020 school year.
Oh, man.
Come on, sir. Any questions or comments?
Call, please. Ms. Ennis.
Yes.
Ms. Stapp.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Ms. Stane.
Mr. Stark.
Yes.
Motion approved four, zero, and one extension.
The next resolution that I will recommend is to approve Kurt Ennis, the varsity high school boys assistant coach, level twenty-three, for the 2019-2020 school year.
I'll move. One second.
Any questions or comments? Call, please. Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mr. Stark.
Yes.
Ms. Ennis.
Ms. Stane.
Ms. Stapp.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Motion approved four, zero, and one extension.
And the last item on my superintendent's report is just a comment about the opening of the school year. It was a really quiet, smooth opening, and it, knock on wood, continues to be very quiet. The kids all got in safely, they came in in the buses, all the buses were run properly, and took a little bit of adjustment to get them going on the first day, getting them out, but as always, we got them all home, and everyone arrived safely. The staff had the buildings ready, the teachers had the classrooms ready, the administrative team, the teachers, the support staff, they all did a wonderful job of having buildings ready and open for the kids, so everyone knows their routine at this point, everyone knows what their roles are and what their routines are, it becomes just a matter of executing, and they all did a great job of that, so good, good opening.
Great, integrated, good year.
Yes, again, yeah, I think that that's something that we made an adjustment to. One of the things that they're doing at the high school this year is doing some outdoor recess, and that's a little bit different. The kids really like that, and they take into that, it's something that they, they're playing out in that middle courtyard area, and believe it or not, kids at this age, they still like that, and so, that's been helpful. So we, every year, we make small adjustments to things like that to see whether we can make transitions better, and so, overall, I think it's been a really great, quiet opening. Kids are in, they're learning, and it's been good.
Is that recess just the H Bay then?
No, the whole, the whole school.
Oh, wow.
So they all have the option, after they're done eating, to go out, and there's probably a gen, it's not many, sixty, eighty kids, they take advantage of it, they, and then that frees up some space in the lunchroom and makes that a little bit better for people that stay there, so, a little bit of tweaking always going on. I know you've got some other ideas for the inside recess and things like that.
They're already asking about the gym. What about when the weather's bad?
Okay.
I saw the chalk that was around the elementary school, and then all the rain the night before, washed it all away. Was it all gone?
Uh, there was some left, so it was...
Without that hardware, it was so cute.
Yeah, we, that's one thing that they're doing at the high school, too, is giving the kids sidewalk training, the only thing with that is you gotta be a little bit more aware, because they'll tell you what their political opinions are on the sidewalk. So it's all good.
Have we had a heavy rain since we did the, we did the parking lot?
Yeah, yeah, all the drainage is good, they fixed the middle school parking lots. We had that issue that was puddling on the south end of the building, that's been taken care of, there was also a problem by the sidewalk that was puddling a lot, and they added a new drain, so, all looks good, it's all draining well, there's no excessive puddling. No matter what, you're gonna have a little bit of puddling because you just can't stop all of it.
Do that surface.
But it's been a great enhancement, and the teachers were happy to have that when they got back because the parking lots needed it.
Yeah, let's go.
Okay. We, one other thing then, too, we had the football game this last Friday, we just, a little bit of a rush, it took longer than expected to get some of that asphalt chip rolled out onto the parking lot, and it's still not completely all spread out, so there's more work to be done there, but that's gonna be a big savings because we took all those chips, and it's making a nice four-inch asphalt parking base instead of just gravel as it was before, so, they've got to roll that, it's not done, so if you see it, it's very temporary right now, and there was a rush, and that wasn't the best-case scenario, but we got it temporarily done, ready for the, at five o'clock. That's all I have.
Okay. Next up, the treasures report.
Recommend a resolution to approve financials for July, or for August 31st, 2019, and that's attachment A.
I'll move.
I'll slide in.
Okay.
Going over the general fund revenue by month, through the month of August, the district has received eight point seven million in the general fund revenue compared to nine million this time last year, eight point three million the year before, and eight point three million in fiscal year seventeen. Couple of things here, our average tax, average collection rate is approximately ninety-seven percent, however, in fiscal year nineteen and fiscal year twenty, the district received a hundred and six percent collection rate, a hundred and three percent collection rate respectively, so, adjustments will be made to the forecast to account for this anomaly in the property tax collections, as we will not continue to always have over a hundred percent tax collection rate. So that's good news for us, we receive more revenue than I would anticipate. Looking at food service revenue through the month of August, we've received two thousand seven hundred dollars in the food service fund compared to sixty thousand in fiscal year nineteen, seventy-two thousand in fiscal year eighteen, and sixty-two and a half thousand in fiscal year seventeen. A couple of reasons for this, we did not receive reimbursement from the school nutrition program in July or August because we didn't sell any lunches, and years past, we would delay that, our request form, so money would show up in July, and we didn't do it that way this year, and historically, we've received June payments during the month of July, I'm sorry, August payments, because we started school prior to Labor Day, so we've had kids in here before that, similarly, we collect a little bit of money in July from June, and then we also started school in August, and this year, we completed none of that, so our revenue has been zero basically this year so far.
We did get our reimbursement back in, did you know, right?
Correct, yeah. And then, when we take a look at all funds, this one's skewed a little bit, too, and I'll get into that in a second here, but through the month of August, the district has received eleven and a half million dollars in all funds compared to nine point four million at this time last year, eight point nine in fiscal year eighteen, eight point seven in fiscal year seventeen. Now, it's a little tricky, but the reason our revenue is as high as it is in fiscal year twenty, it's because of a transfer. If you remember last board meeting, I had us transfer one point nine million dollars from the oh sixteen fund in the general fund, well, when I do that on these books, it books it as a revenue, and it also books it as an expenditure on both sides, so the expenditures, when we get to them, will also seem skewed, but they're basically two million dollars skewed. Once you subtract the two million dollars, we'll be fall pretty much right in line with where we were at last year. Looking at expenditures through the month of August, the district's expended four point three million dollars in the general fund compared to four point zero last year, three point seven the year before, and three point eight in fiscal year seventeen. And again, fiscal year twenty and fiscal year nineteen are higher than previous years because three pays were issued these years in August, whereas in eighteen and seventeen, the three pays occurred in September. So again, a lot of this stuff is just tiny, but we're, we're outpaced where we should be. Looking at food service expenditures through the month of August, we've expended a hundred and two, a hundred and three thousand dollars in food service compared to fifty-eight thousand in fiscal year nineteen, forty-five thousand in eighteen, and seventy thousand in seventeen, and again, this is by design, we've coded additional salaries toward food service, and we've also purchased a couple of additional capital outlay for the cafeterias over the summer months here, so we're, we're trying to spend that down a little bit. And then, when we look at all funds by expenditure, again, you can see that green bar up there, that's two million dollars just from a transfer up there. So again, through the month of August, the district has expended six point nine million from all funds compared to four point four last year, four point one the previous year, four point two in seventeen, and again, this increase in expenditures is caused by approximately two million transfers and increases to health insurance premiums. And then, the last part here, we want to take a look at cash. For the general fund through the month of August, the district has a total of twenty point six million dollars in cash in the general fund compared to nineteen point six at this time last year, eighteen point six in eighteen, and eighteen point five in fiscal year seventeen. Looking at our food service cash through the month of August, the district has a total of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand in cash in food service compared to three hundred and one thousand last year, two hundred and ninety-six thousand in fiscal year eighteen, and two hundred and ten thousand in fiscal year seventeen. Again, we're trying to deplete that a little bit to get us, we're gonna, we're shooting for just below a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand, and we don't want to get too much higher than that. And lastly, we'll take a look at all cash through the month of August, the district has a total of twenty-four point one million in all cash from all funds compared to twenty-three million in fiscal year nineteen, twenty-two point three million in fiscal year eighteen, and twenty-two million in fiscal year seventeen. And then lastly here, we take a look at our investments, I put the last four months on there in the last quarter, but through the month of August, the district has earned a total of fifty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars on interest compared to forty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars in fiscal year nineteen, which is a difference of six thousand dollars or eleven point six dollars, or eleven point six percent more.
Any questions or comments?
Call, please. Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Ms. Stapp.
Yes.
Ms. Ennis.
Yes.
Mr. Stark.
Yes.
Motion approved five, zero. Recommend a resolution to accept a donation of three hundred and forty-five dollars from Inspire Base Productions for cross-country volunteering at the triathlon.
Questions?
Ms. Ennis.
Yes.
Mr. Stark.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Ms. Stapp.
Yes.
Motion approved five, zero. Recommend a resolution to approve the service agreement between the Educational Service Center in Lorain County and Romalian Local Schools for the ESCLC to provide a literacy consultant for Romalian Local Schools for two and a half days, a cost of thirteen hundred and seventy-five dollars to Olivia Weisman, explicit vocabulary instruction.
A second.
Yeah, what exactly is this? Should I, no.
I'll be honest, I don't, I did not review this. If you want to pull it, because I just saw this here, and we can review it, I, Bonnie, do you know anything about this?
I thought a half a day at the high school for NEOE, that half a day PD, she goes a half a day, I don't know.
Okay, this just, this just got added, I think, and...
I just wonder.
Olivia Weisman, is that appro, that's not a...
No, she's the literary consultant from the ESC of Lorain County, and I know that Lisa has her coming for a PD, I thought it was just a half, one of those half days. It was a half day. PD, so that's the only thing I know, I don't know if anybody else has signed on.
So this, this must be part of then our professional development for that time that we contracted with, or if you, I can, how about...
How about we'll just go ahead and vote on it, because it's not a huge amount of money?
Right.
Yeah, I'll send you the information tomorrow.
Yeah, you go back and just make sure.
I apologize. I don't, I didn't see this get on there, it wasn't in the original draft.
That's fine, yeah, just go back and make sure.
Yeah, when we drafted this, I did, this was not on there, and it got added, so.
Okay, go ahead, call, please. Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Ms. Stapp.
Yes.
Ms. Ennis.
Yes.
Mr. Stark.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Motion approved five, zero. Recommend a resolution to approve the second amended certificate of estimated resources and that's attachment B. Ultimately, what happened, none of the total appropriations changed, what happened is, I had a conversation with our auditors, and I had a conversation with the other state's office, and I had put the safety and security levy in the general fund with a special cost center, and they thought it would be better to be a special revenue fund, so they wanted me to put it in a zero-three-zero fund, so by doing that, I had to change some of these numbers around. The total is still the same as you approved back in July, I just had to put the, well, actually, if you look at the very top here, under taxes, I had to reduce our general fund taxes from fifteen million to fourteen point seven, and then put that three hundred thousand in there for special revenue, which wasn't before, and that's the safety and security levy, and then I had to update the unencumbered balance July 1, 2019, thirteen point three million used to be a little bit higher, subtract that out, and add it on to the special revenue. So all this is, is just starting to set the county there, it's just for us to approve, but I just had to move some numbers around, they didn't change.
So should the totals at the bottom be the same?
Yeah, totals should, well, they should be, but not, no, I know, I see that now.
Missing the three.
Well, actually, they shouldn't be the same, but what it is, is the change, so, when you look at July, under that zero-three-zero fund, I didn't have anything appropriated there.
Right.
So I did appropriate it over here.
Doesn't it come out of somewhere, though?
Not from this side, on the top section, the top section didn't change, and that's what the county's gonna go look at.
Okay.
The top section, the three hundred thousand was above in the general fund, and now it's below. Down here, though, it did change three hundred thousand from that, from that mark, but I subtract, that's what it is, you're right, I forgot to subtract it from the general fund.
So should the general fund be twenty-five, seven hundred?
Correct. Good catch, thank you.
Blank squirrel.
And then, on the last page here, all it is, is just, again, a check. This is just showing what we have as far as revenue goes, which is at forty-four point two nine nine million, what we've appropriated at twenty-nine point three one one, and the difference, so we still have approximately fifteen million dollars that we're not appropriating that we have in reserve.
Go ahead and move.
Just a second.
Any other questions?
Ms. Stapp.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mr. Stark.
Yes.
Ms. Ennis.
Yes.
Motion approved five, zero. And then I put together just a real quick presentation here for this forecast five analytics that we purchased. This has some pretty interesting things that you could do with it. So what this is, is when I used to put together presentations for you in the past, I would have to go to the Ohio Department of Education, the Ohio Department of Taxation, and pull all this raw data together, extrapolate it to make it usable for us, and then from there, make charts or graphs or whatever you need to. What this does is this not only ties into the Ohio Department of Taxation, it ties into EMIS, it ties into Ohio Department of Education, it ties into the other state's office, it has the ability to pull all kinds of different data that would take me hours to do before, and so, just to show you a couple of examples here of how this stuff works, so if we go over to the financial section here, and if we wanted to know our state ranking on expenses, so I can pull any single school district in Ohio with this, so if I wanted to just sort it off by county, and let's say we want to look at Erie, and So right now, we are comparing ourselves to every single school district in Lorain and Erie County, and right now, we're looking at the general fund, so let's say we wanted to narrow the scope even further, let's say we wanted to look at just our instructional This is on a per-student basis, and appears where the, where the information's coming from. So, right now, we are four lowest in spending on instruction compared to everybody else in Lorain and Erie County, maybe let's just look at Erie County. So again, through Erie County, here we are, we're spending five thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-six cents per pupil, and highest is Sandusky, spending seven thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Down here, this is a percentage of operating, so what they're saying is, we are spending fifty-three percent of our operating budget on education compared to sixty-two percent for Sandusky. That's just your instructional, so let's look at our supporting services. Supporting services, we get a little bit higher here, again, highest in Margarita at five point five thousand, looking at, I don't know, Margarita right here, and again, forty-three percent of our budget's going toward supporting services, and the discussion always is for extracurriculars, how do we compare extracurricular spending? We spend the most per pupil, that can be misleading a little bit, just because if you go over here, you know, at a same hereon, we don't all have the same populations, but what is interesting is maybe looking at it on your budget, so we spent four point seven seven percent of our operating budget on extracurricular activities, whereas Sandusky the next closest one's at three and a half percent. So again, this, this data, this would take...
That includes like sensations and debate and all of that, too.
Correct, correct.
Right?
Yes, this is, this is anything that doesn't deal with instruction.
Yeah.
But again, for me to go through the raw data and pull this out, this would take hours.
That is really on the circuit.
And so, again, what I can also do is, I can create our peer group, so if we wanted certain schools, just specific schools to look at, I can create, rather than doing it by county, you know, if we get rid of an ITC and we add Lorain back in here. We have North Bridgeville's spending nine point seven seven percent of their operating budget on extracurriculars, Wellington's up there, Eri is up there, lowest one, Margarita and Avon, they're almost there. So again, there's one of those things, and again, it's just good data to have to know where you're spending your money. Another one that's also interesting, too, under the financials here, is your FTE spending. So again, we'll go through here.
What's FTE?
Full-time employment.
Okay.
So we'll go through here, we'll pull out, through Erie and Lorain County. If you wanted to just know our salaries, let's plug the ESC's to business, let's just look at, let's just look at the school system. So again, we wanted to take a look and say, what is our salary expense per full-time employment? We can take a look here, Margarita's at fifty-six, Eri, Sheffield, Midview, so, so, millions down at the bottom, or not the bottom, closer to the bottom quarter, thirty-nine, if you want to add in there our benefits, because even now, if you hire somebody who has salaries and benefits, we can take a look at the cost for our benefits as well. Again, just great tools to understand where we compare and how we stack up, and where our money's going, we can control that. It's great. Yeah, there's a lot of reports here, we can go through, just a couple more, I don't want this to take all night, but for enrollment, one of the ones that I found interesting was this, the open enrollment scatter graph here. So if we want to find where our students are going and coming from. And we can do multiple years as well, if you have... If you hover over it, we have 48 transfers in Fireland. Fireland is our biggest place that our students are open enrolling to. Next, it looks like here on 14 transfers, 15 that is Perkins to Sandusky one, Midview one, we got one to Clearview to Lorain. So again, it's just good to see where your students are going as well. And then the last one that I put together, I thought this was interesting. And again, we'll just use Erie and Lorain County. Maybe we'll go over-- I don't know, we're only around two. So now let's take a look. I will take a look at position. We can look at, let's just look at teachers. Might be easier to see as well. Okay, so now we have a big scatter graph. It's kind of hard to see. So if we wanted to know where we stood, we highlight it. And here's where all of our teachers are by name, position, years of experience, salaries. So if we wanted to say, you know, how do we compare to Margarita's schools? Here's an individual down Margarita, here's their line. It works out well when you're looking at how does our salary schedule compare to other school salaries schedules? Get on highlighted, you can see, it looks like the average is right through here. So we highlight ourselves, it looks like we're right in line for the most part with where the money is.
No big outliers either?
No, no big outliers. Again, that just teaches you, we can add counseling in there as well. Pretty young specialist, and you know, we can start adding more and more, but the more and more we add, we're pretty much right in that line of averages. And it's good information to have, especially in negotiations. Again, this information, I just wanted to give you a quick overview of why I thought this stuff was important, but not only that, just the amount of time that it saves me going through and extrapolating the raw data and putting it into something like this, I can go through here now and I can have 15 reports in 20 minutes depending on what we're looking for. So that was it.
That's awesome. Very cool.
So you're going to coach something with all your extra time?
I was going to say.
Is he going to coach something with his extra time?
I could, I could excel without that.
Oh, that's great.
That's really awesome.
Yeah.
And so if you guys are curious and want to explore some of the stuff I can share with you, I'm allowed to, two people to have their own logins and passwords, but I'm able to share my password with everybody and login. So if you're ever at home looking for some data to look at and, you know?
Like you do.
Yeah.
That is cool stuff, lots.
It is. That is really neat though.
Hey, I tried to bring everybody to the dark side. Nobody, it never works.
Bonnie's a numbers person, you probably think that's very cool.
I have my own login.
I've adjusted all day. Hey, look at this.
That was really neat.
That is really cool.
This is very cool for sharing.
And that's just the tip of the iceberg. There's all kinds of stuff that we can get from the data point of view of how we compare, maybe how other school districts are spending their money versus how we're spending our money and then make a decision if we want to mirror others' trends like that.
That's great. Next up items for discussion. I just had one sort of going back to his, starting later. Did we hear anything? Were people happy with starting a little later during the year and during the fair?
Yeah, that was a very positive move, not just in our own community, outside of our community. People that I talked to complimented us on the late start. The staff loved it. I heard no negativity whatsoever. So I think that that's something we need to think about doing, just keep it up.
I'm more positive feedback and community about it.
Yeah.
Consent agenda. Superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items. Actions by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board, the treasurer or the superintendent requests that any such items be removed from the consent agenda and floated upon separately. Number one, minutes of August 12, 2019, regular meeting, attached receipt. Two, adoption, adopt revisions of the following district policies and accompanying guidelines. It was recommended by Niola for the second read. 5113.02, 5610, 5610.03, 6320, 6325, 6605, 7540.02 replacement, 8400, 8500, attached receipt. Number three, recommend a resolution to approve the eighth grade Washington DC trip May 4th through 6th, 2020, attached receipt. Number four, recommend a resolution to approve the transportation for Brinkley Adams to and from Open Door for the Fireland School District and Tyler Volz for Perkins Local School District. Approve the following employment actions. Letter of resignation from Anthony Lepa, VHS intervention specialist effective August 30th, 2019. Anokir Carreras, SMS monitor effective August 30th, 2019. Number five, maternity leave Samantha Taylor, bus garage from September 3rd, 2019 until October 1st, 2019. Number six, one-year classified contract for the 2019-2020 contract year as listed. Number seven, one-year classified substitute for the contract year 2019-2020 as listed. Number eight, one-year additional duties contract for the 2019-2020 contract year as listed. Number nine, one-year supplemental contract for the 2019-2020 contract year as listed. And number 10, one-year certified contract for the 2019-2020 contract year to Tonya Brady, SMS intervention specialists. Does anybody have anything they--
Number seven.
Yeah. We just pull him or the whole?
Just, just him.
All right. Anything else?
A second. I have a question. The first under four, the transportation. Is there a Fireland district where I would pay for transportation?
In Perkins.
Yeah.
This, uh, these are, these are special ed students and we're, they're technically within our district. They're our resident kids, but we're having to transport them to--
Is the open door that's here open to old school rooms?
No. No, what had happened was in the past, I think this was a historical thing, but they live in our district, but they would open enroll out to these other schools and there was an agreement that it was, they were, they were being picked up on their way from another route and they've decided to go in a different direction and make sure that they're going to charge us for it now.
So they could have before and just did?
They can still do it the exact same way, it's just they do have the ability to charge us if they want to. And they want to charge us now.
So yeah, so both are coming from ours?
Going out. They were on the existing route.
Do we have, I mean, this kind of transportation, do we have like smaller vehicles? I see like a van from the end or school, do we have, or are we doing a full size bus?
No, when we can, we schedule the smallest bus possible. It's not always possible because the way the routes are scheduled and the way the routes are run, but Dave will take a look at that and whenever possible, he tries to do the most effective small bus or van or whatever he can do to save on expense.
Do we have a van?
We do. We have seven or nine passenger buses, not seven, nine passenger buses. We run those when we can, but--
Both of these students are going to Open Door?
From the one that's-- Yeah, one is-- Yeah, I'm thinking of, these might, I first said that they were special ed students, but-- Make it for me there. Yeah, ODE really has it so that if your student's going to attend somewhere else, you still need to provide transportation for them in certain situations. It's usually a 30-mile radius is what they have. So if one of our students wished to attend something that was driven under IEP, we would have to provide transportation out there for them. Sometimes we can partner up with other school districts and placement of the school district and then they'll, because they're already going there, but, but there's a cost to that.
Any other questions? Forward. I think we didn't. Who moved? I move Crystal Stephanie.
Ms. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Haiden?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.
And for the items that was, that was removed from the consent agenda, any questions?
Well, you got to--
I'll call.
Recommend a resolution to--
Recommend a resolution for a one-year classified substitute contract year 2019-20 to William Stark. Stark, 10 dollars per hour.
I'll move.
A second.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Ms. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Haiden?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
I'm staying.
Motion approved 4-0, one extension.
We should have another motion under this before we get to, you know, we've got the items from consent agenda, but we don't have this for the, for anything I--
Regarding what?
Should we have the move by and second by for--
I have, I have it on my notes.
Probably should have.
But yeah, we should add that. Okay, next up, public participation.
Last chance.
Okay. We have an 11, date and locations of upcoming board meetings located in Lorain High School, 1250 Sanford Street, Lorain, unless noted otherwise. Regular meeting Monday, October 14, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Regular meeting Monday, November 11th at 7:00 PM. And regular meeting Monday, September 9th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Did we figure out if we're going to go later for the, to miss-- To miss a capital conference in November?
If. As far as, as far as capital conference, if, if no board member wishes to go, then I think we can keep the schedule as is.
Are you going to go?
I don't really want to go by myself, but I feel kind of weird like none of us know.
You're not missing tons.
I'm going to pass. I've been three, four, five years in a row, so--
I, I think what would be easiest, if there are certain things or certain topics that you want, I can explain it to you. So if there are certain board things that you do want to add information--
We had the building project, that was interesting to see things and things that we were doing, but for me--
And I think you can download all this.
Yes, we can. Any that you're interested in, you can get the whole thing.
Yep. Listen, right after you move that forecast flash.
Okay, so we'll leave them everywhere it is. Okay. Okay. Well, recommend a resolution to move an executive session for the purpose of matters requiring we kept confidential or fair law or rules versus state statutes.
I'll move. A second.
Mr. Haiden?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Ennis?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford? Motion approved 5-0.